Everyone, welcome. I'm going to call to order today's budget study session for the morning of May 8th, day two. Here we go. Day one wasn't too bad, right? Got through it on time. Megan, would you please call the roll?
Kamay, Campos, Salas, Cohen, Ortiz.
Present.
Mulcahy.
Here.
Dwan.
Yep.
Kandellis.
Here.
Casey, Foley.
Here.
Mahin.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you so much for today's study session. We will be hearing presentations on transportation and aviation services and environmental and utility services. So we will get started first with transportation and aviation services excluding lived-in vehicles, which will be handled in a future study session. Want to guide folks to try to focus in on the issues for this CSA, this presentation. We will hear from staff and try to keep this section to roughly one hour, roughly 9:30 to 10:30. And then I will transition us to our second study session on environmental and utility services. And once again, we will get out of here by noon. All right, let's jump in.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John Risto, Director of Surface Transportation. With me today is Mookie Patel, our Aviation Director, and our new Deputy City Manager, Manuel Pineda. So we will jump in. As Mayor said, this is Transportation Aviation Services, and we're going to go through a very brief slide presentation. You can see on this slide, the core services that both our departments serve, which is really customer-focused. Obviously with the airport and the passengers and the people working at the airports, very, very much a customer service outcome. And in transportation, similar, we really do do a lot of core services right in people's front yard, their front street, and a lot of other services that support everyday living. Just some of the program samples, and I'm sure most of you are all aware of the types of services that both of our departments do. Just to highlight a couple, it's the, really, the airport and the terminals and the customer satisfaction that goes into running a really highly thought-of airport with the City of San Jose. And then all the other traffic safety and other services that we do provide with the Transportation Department, both above, on, and below the surface of the roadways. Just want to touch on a couple of these that, some of our metrics, while they don't show a gigantic change, these are all positive or relatively positive from years in the past. And I just want to highlight a couple of them. The passenger perception of airport satisfaction, it's a modest increase, but still an increase. And still, this airport is doing very well with that in terms of comparative to other airports. Then I also want to just highlight our pavement condition index continues to go up. Those of you that have been around, while back in 2014, our pavement condition index was about 63, which was barely fair. So over the last 10 or 11 years, we've raised it 10 points, which is a pretty significant improvement. Some of the budget summary, you can see up there. Just want to point out again, and Mayor mentioned this, is that part of the transportation budget also ends up in the utility services, CSA, and so we'll be talking about that later. You can see there's very small increases in the operating portions of our, both of our budgets, and a small one FTE increase in staffing. Highlighting some of the priorities that we both have, both the Department of Transportation and the Aviation Department, our top priority is safety, both for our passengers and our staff that are assigned to those roles. So both Mookie and I put that as a top priority in our staffs as well. Another one that's really important for airport is the last one, to continue to provide safe services for passengers, airlines, and tenants, and prioritize the maintenance of that operations and a cost-effective operation, which Mookie and his staff do an excellent job of. Onto a couple of the proposed budget actions, just want to highlight a couple. We will talk about this in a little bit, but there is a reserve set aside for an enhanced oversized lived-in vehicle enforcement program that's coming up, which we'll talk about. Also want to point out that for the airport, the 2026 many sporting events that we're going to have in the city, there's a marketing and support budget proposal for that. And then finally, we are going to be addressing some of the invasive shot-hole, border beetle management for some of the trees that are impacted throughout the city. And just in summary, again, some of the important things are, it's all about safety for us, both on the transportation surface side, as well as growing airport passenger traffic and destinations is an important focus of Mookie and his team. And that does conclude our report. Tried to keep it short, and we are ready for questions.
Short and sweet, all right. Grateful for that. Okay, we'll go to Vice Mayor Foley.
Thank you. I wouldn't want the CSA to feel that we don't love you. So I had to come up with a question, and it's really, it's, I didn't have to come up with a question, but it's related to Vision Zero. And I'm very concerned about federal funds as it relates to the grant that we've requested for speed cameras. Can you, John, give us an update on the speed cameras? And is there a Plan B for funding the speed cameras?
Thank you, and I'm glad you asked a question. It's always good to actually get right back to traffic safety and things. So the speed camera program was, just to remind everybody, was state legislation that went through a year or two ago that allowed six cities in the state to actually install speed cameras that would automatically check speeds for drivers on certain corridors and then issue a citation, similar to a parking citation, as a fine for exceeding a speed limit. San Jose was one of those cities, and we were, we are in the process of procuring the vendor that would be providing the cameras and the backhouse operation to issue citations. We're at the final stages of that, 99% done. What has held us up is we did receive a federal grant of $8.5 million to help with the first startup of this project, and it is frozen right now by the federal government, as is many other federal transportation and other grants. So to answer your question, we're, we are waiting to see if that could get unfrozen. That's Plan A. Plan B is if it doesn't look like that's going to happen, we may be able to do a phased program of installation using some other funds. We're trying to seek for that. So that's where we are right now. We're kind of in a paused period, just waiting to see if that federal grant will be.
Okay, given the timing of the pilot program, that it's a three-year pilot, and we're a year and plus into it, I'm concerned that we wait too long for the frozen funds to melt and be accessible to us. So is it possible to proceed with Plan B now? Or how long will you wait for the current federal funding grant before we can, we move to Plan B?
We were asked to just at least give it a month, and that was about a week ago. So we're going to give it that much time to see if something will free up. It is a five-year program, so yes, we're in, we're into it. And we had intended that this would be implementation in June, which we're, we're getting close to. So there could be a delay due to that, but we are prepared to do a Plan B if we need to in a phased approach. But we've been asked to just wait a little bit longer to see if that federal grant would free up.
Okay, thank you. It's.
I was just going to say, Vice Mayor, we're also going to be asking the state legislature to, to move from five years to six or seven, given that ourselves and other cities will be in a similar position with the federal funding at risk, so that pilot actually will last longer.
Great, that was going to be actually my next question about advocating to have it extended. We worked really hard to get that pilot program approved and have San Jose included. So I hate to see it stall. It's really important in the safety of our residents. So I'm glad we have a Plan B, and we're going to put it in place in a few weeks. Thank you, John. And Mookie, I think you're doing a great job running the airport.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Agreed. Let's go to Councilor Kamay.
This is just a follow-up on Vice Mayor's question on the federal funds. It's actually going to affect many other departments as well. And I think that as we move forward, having a Plan B is going to be essential. And of course, you know, it's, it's fine to be able to ask for further extension, like a six-year, seven-year for implementation. But I also think that, you know, as we move things back, it becomes very, very difficult to try to get that information that we absolutely need. So in some cases, I think that we may want to think about, is there a way of funding some of these projects in a creative way? I just put that out there because I know that there are many. So as we move forward, I think that there's also the expectation in the community that these things were going to be done. And so I think that sort of laying out the information to the community, saying, hey, you know, this is, this is our plan because of, you know, the funds not being available or whatever it is, right? So, because I know that in my district, they always ask about everything, especially on transportation issues. So I think that that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let me go to Councilmember Kandellis.
Thank you, Mayor. John, thank you for the presentation. I'm going to shift gears a little bit. I have a question. One of the issues that we've been grappling with over the last year, as you, as you and I talked about a little bit yesterday, is copper wire thefts. Curious as to what kind of actions we're taking in the proposed operating budget, might be in the capital budget, to see how we can curtail and/or address the issue in that we're seeing a surge of copper wire thefts, not necessarily outages, but related to, you know, people not acting great.
Thank you, another really timely question. Not all council districts have suffered the way District Eight has with regard to this copper theft. And what is the result is streetlights being out in large areas. So over the last several months, probably about half a year or so, when copper prices went up, we started to experience a real dramatic impact of copper wire theft for our streetlights. We're at a point where we, we had about 1,600 lights out at one time. We are repairing them. We're, we're at about 800 left to go. We do that on overtime and with contractor help as well. But it is costly and causes those lights to be out for an extended period of time, which is not good for safety either. So what we did do with a lot of support from City Manager's Office was we had, we do have a budget proposal in for $1 million to actually help us catch up with those repairs. And I know another question will be, well, what about the people doing this crime? To my knowledge, right now, the Police Department does have one arrest with regard to this, but I know they're really focusing on that as well. This is something that's happened in many other communities throughout California. So there is work trying to be done to actually address this through either something that could deter them on the ground, which hasn't worked yet, but then also enhance enforcement of that as well. But thank you, it's, it is a big problem, causing us a lot of work to do. Yet, if the budget proposal goes through, we should be able to catch up with that.
Appreciate that. That's, that's great news. And I think, Jimmy, you want to.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, so that, that dollar amount, that's in the proposed capital budget, so that's $1 million in the construction excise tax fund where that DOT proposal sits.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Thank you, John.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate you highlighting that and continuing to stay on top of it and kind of push everybody on it. And also want to echo the comment about SJPD. Appreciate Chief and the team prioritizing this. And sometimes it takes us a while to get to the point where we're able to create that accountability, whether it's with sideshows or catalytic converter thefts or these things that we, these trends that we see. But our department is really doing a great job of then honing in, getting the evidence, doing the investigations. And there will be accountability for what we've been seeing. It's costly and dangerous and just wrong. Okay, we've got a couple of hands still up. Let's go to Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your report, John and Mookie. I want to piggytail with Councilmember Kandellis. It's not only a problem in DA, but now is getting to be quite a bit of a problem in D7. And it's not just the copper theft, it becomes safety issues because a lot of these lighting in very underserved, especially like areas where Rock Spring, where we have a lot of unshelters, residents, and also have a lot of crime. So the resident is now a fear to take walk at night with their kids because there's lack of lighting, including obviously some tree trimming needs to be done. How are you prevent, besides replacing the copper wires to these lighting? I noticed normally you have a plate and a bolt that is secure, but I noticed that there's some area that we actually welded the plate. Because how often do we need to service those wires, right? And is that an option to prevent further theft?
Thank you, Councilmember. And yes, that is, we have been trying a number of different ways to do it. One of them, originally, there was a locking device on both the pole and what we're suffering is the in-the-ground, if you see those small little cabinets that are accessible from ground, that those used to be secured. We even tried to pour concrete inside both pole and these secured, trying to secure those areas like that, as well as in the ground, and that didn't work. So we've tried a number of them already. I think there probably will be some technology that was, will be available to us, but right now, nothing seems to be working. We do have to repair it and then try to, try to make sure that they don't get in it again. But it's, it's a difficult problem. And again, it's not just us. Many cities in the state are actually going through that same thing. So I'm sure there will be something that will come up that'll help us, but right now, nothing seems to be working.
Thank you. This question go to Mookie. I, you know, I've gone to airports throughout the world, and San Jose a little bit lacking in art. What are you working on to, you know, get more arts in there so people can entertain themselves while waiting for flights and so on?
Yeah, thank you for that question. The art program is administered through OED and Cultural Affairs. It's a, it's a program that was put together when Concourse B was initially completed, and it's a technology-focused art program. I can get you more details on what is planned to come into the program. We've had some installations right at the checkpoint recently in Terminal B that have been a big fan favorite. We're always promoting the arts. We're looking for ways for partnering outside of the airport and in the region as we do our brand activations and we try to hit up some art venues and art walks. So I don't have a clear plan of what the execution plan is moving forward. There's, there's a significant balance there that we work with Office of Economic Development on that installation program, but I can come back to your office and share that.
Thank you, Mookie and John. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Go to Councilmember Mulcahy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for the report. John, kind of following up on the, sort of the copper theft, but really more about the freeways and expressways that run in and through our city that we don't directly control. I know the mayor has been pushing hard with Caltrans on, you know, especially the 280 corridor and so forth. But curious what DOT is doing, what the relationship is there, both with Caltrans and how, you know, we're sort of pushing there, as well as this idea of what to do with our expressways, that as we're improving our streets around the city, you just see how, how those expressways need so much attention. So can you comment generally about some of that and what DOT can be doing?
Yeah, thank you. Let's start with Caltrans. Although the Department of Transportation doesn't get involved in the beautify efforts, both with the state and city in terms of freeway, either graffiti or cleanup, some, the departments that do beautify and Mayor's Office are always working with Caltrans, actually do encampment cleanups and coordinate that, as well as litter and graffiti. So there is work being done, it's just not our department. With regard to Caltrans, we work very closely with Caltrans on freeway improvements within the city, and we have a very good working relationship with those project and program managing staff at Caltrans and through VTA as well, where we're improving freeway, freeway or interchange improvements within the city. So all that is very good. We've got a number of them underway right now. With regard to the county, in the mayor's message, he did mention the desire to actually investigate with the county how to improve maintenance on some of the expressways. And we are doing that. We've been meeting with my counterpart over in the county, Harry Freitas, to actually talk about how we could do that. Some, we will be bringing back some of that information, what the county is going to do themselves, and then some other options where the city may enter into an agreement with the county to actually take on some levels of maintenance on the expressways if we are compensated for that. The county does have agreements with some North County cities on the Foothill Expressway that do that right now. We're investigating whether or not that would be good enough for us. So right now, that is underway, and we'll be reporting back on that. So as far as, you know, to date, is that being, that meaning the expressway work, is that being considered by this budget that we're looking at now? Right now, we don't have anything in the budget for that. It would be our preference that similarly what the county is doing with the other cities, that they're, they actually pay for some of that work instead of them doing it. So. Sounds like a good idea. Right now, I don't know that that's enough compensation, as we've looked at the numbers with the other cities, but we're going to be talking with the county about, about just that. Sounds like a fair trade. We shouldn't be taking our funds and paying during, in a county expressway in their jurisdiction. They get state gas tax for that. So we would be, our preference would be to seek money from the county to take on that enhanced maintenance. We shall see if that will get anywhere with them, though. Great, thank you. That's a good strategy. And then, Mookie, you know, you run such a big enterprise. We had a little bit of a briefing from Blogue yesterday about sort of general, you know, economics. Can you give us just a maybe snapshot, if you would? You know, we've talked about land use at the airport recently. We've talked about people movers at the airport recently. Give us a state of the economy of the airport, if you don't mind, for a moment.
Yeah, I think Blogue did a great job yesterday, just touching on the fact that we are a litmus test of the local and state economy. At the start of this calendar year, we saw about a 9% drop-off in traffic. We thought it was mostly related to wildfires in Southern California. We do have a tremendous amount of population that, that transverse themselves between Northern and Southern California, interstate California travel for leisure and for business. And we saw a 9% drop in traffic. And then we saw another 9%, a little over 9% in February, and about a 5.3% drop-off in March. I think there's just some recessionary fears, not to take away from Blogue's presentation yesterday. People are just tightening up their budgets. We have shifted more to a leisure focus on our customer base than a business customer base, as most of those business travelers are now working remote and in different parts of the country and travel far less than they used to. So both sides of the ledger, in terms of the traveling consumer, is, is seeing some softening. The forecast, airlines do load their schedules into a system that we have access to, so we know how many seats they're reducing, and we're seeing some additional drops offs after August. So once the summer school goes back into, into session, just, Delta recently sent us an email, and they said, it's not San Jose, it's just a national kind of drawback in terms of travel demand. And so they're cutting system-wide onesies, twosies here and there. So we're not losing any non-stop destinations that I'm aware of at this moment. The BWI non-stop will stop for about six weeks between Christmas and New Year's, but it'll be back in the new year. The Detroit flight will end a little early, that's just launching this week, actually, I think, or this month. But the Vegas flight will stay there with Delta, too. So Delta will compete with some other carriers on the Vegas route. So it's kind of a mixed bag right now, and we're just kind of holding our breath.
Great. Well, thank you both. We know you're working hard, so appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Councilmember. And I appreciate the questions about Caltrans, the county, or sort of shared, obviously, different jurisdictions, but from the community standpoint, shared infrastructure, it's one, one system of transportation. And appreciate all the work that John and the team have been doing to engage both. You know, as the message, budget message mentioned, we're essentially exploring some version of a delegated maintenance agreement, where an agency would say, hey, you guys are closer to the ground, have more capacity, can do it generally better, faster, cheaper. We have some resources to do this, but it's sub-optimized, because we're looking at this massive area, and this isn't necessarily always our core competency, particularly when it comes to the county. We manage so many more miles of local roads that it makes a lot more sense if you're going, you know, a block over. What's the difference between a city and a county road when it comes to trimming the weeds or the, or picking up the litter or covering up graffiti or whatever it might be? And how annoying is it for all of us to have to tell a constituent, oh, actually, that's not a city road or sound barrier, that's actually the county, that's actually VTA? So to the extent that we can, and this isn't going to happen overnight, but philosophically, move toward a system in which we each find our comparative advantages and figure out how to align budgets so that we're each playing to our strengths, whether that's the county doing human services and case management, or us doing road maintenance and picking up trash and covering up graffiti. We have different strengths, and we can probably better utilize existing budget and deliver better outcomes if we can get better aligned with partners around service delivery, rather than being all over each other, trying to do, be everything to everyone in a, in a sub-optimized way. Want to thank Caltrans, by the way, since it was brought up, and Dina Eltawanzi, who is the Regional Manager for District Four for the nine-county Bay Area. As you may have noticed, they have now replaced a number of freeway signs. They've made a big push. While all of my advocacy has no doubt been annoying, I do want to note frontline Caltrans staff, as we all know, do an amazing job and work incredibly hard. But I do think there are two things this body can do to be helpful. One is, is really just engagement, highlighting for Caltrans that we really care, and encouraging our constituents to report. I have, believe it or not, come across, our team has come across freeway signs that have been tagged for a year that still haven't been reported, usually smaller signs. So encouraging our community to know how to report things to Caltrans and make sure that we're highlighting that we care, that we want our city to be clean and beautiful. And then with the county, I think encouraging county supervisors and those of us who sit on VTA, other agencies to think in a more nimble way about how we align our service delivery and our resources to play to our respective strengths as a role we can all play at the governance level. Okay, I see we've got, Councilmember Ortiz next.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you both, John, Mookie, for your work and dedication to the city. Most of my questions are going to be related to transportation, not because the airport is not important, but because my constituents see the streets and the roads and issues, it's kind of in their face. So no offense to the airport. So first question, so on page 309, regarding the pavement condition index. Since both the fiscal year '24, '25 estimate and the fiscal year '25, '26 targets are at 74, and how are we, I guess, moving the needle forward? Are we going to be trying to identify strategies to improve that estimate? What are we doing to make sure we're meeting that estimate every year?
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, getting to 74 was a very good thing for us, since we started at 63 a number of years ago. So, and I really have to actually thank both Mayor, Council, and the voters for getting us this, because it really, it was the meaningful resources that we got back in 2016. Both it was the city's Measure T, as well as VTA's Measure B, which was a countywide vote, plus the state gas tax increase that actually had to survive a recall. All three of those really helped. The, the one that's going to go away in two years is the city's Measure T Bond Fund. So we've got another two years of a very robust pavement program, over 200 miles a year. But once we get to 2028, '29, we're losing about 40% of that budget. So one of the. we're losing about 40% of that budget. So one of the things is, okay, what are we going to do to be able to maintain that level of pavement repair? Because it'll immediately, that pavement condition index will start to decrease over the year. So, and I know that we in the city are contemplating other ways to do this, but also, we're also keeping an eye on the regional measure that's being talked about at MTC level, Bay Area, as well as potentially VTA maybe re-upping one of their sales taxes. So we're keeping an eye on that. I don't know that we can count on them, but right now, we're, we're good for another two years of robust pavement, but then after that, it will start to decrease.
Is the department contemplating us going out for our own mechanism to fund it?
Well, it, it has definitely been talked about at the council level, in committee and in this dius as well, but we haven't actually formulated anything yet, but I, but I do think it's very important. There's, and it's not just the pavement that needs to be repaired. There's still a lot of city assets that are depreciating and actually over every year needs additional funding to actually keep up at a good level. So it's not just pavement.
Okay. It seems like we got to go out to the voters for a lot of funds. So we're juggling a lot of priorities. Next, next question, on page 310, regarding the 250,000 in funding to address the backlog of sidewalk repairs adjacent to city-owned properties. How are these properties going to be prioritized? Are we going to be taking into consideration proximity to seniors, individuals with disabilities? What, how is the department going to be tackling?
So you're, are you talking about the city-owned properties?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. So we will be doing assessments of where those needed sidewalk repairs are and prioritize those that are probably with the highest level of walking area. But it is the city-owned properties. It could be at parks. It could be at in front of facilities. It could be a lot of those things. So when we, we'll go out and assess which ones need to have that priority level of work. We also have a whole sidewalk program that we do require adjacent private property owners to also repair. The council's aware of that. We do, and within that program, we've got a program to assist lower income people that need to be repairing. So there is, that's part of a budget too, but it's, it's not this one. This one is for city-owned properties. But we have one that helps property owners with their repairs, either 50% or some cases, all of it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's, that's good for us to know because that, obviously, we have some trees for the east side and it's been really a struggle to get individuals and businesses to accept them, because we do see sidewalks getting impacted and, you know, things like that.
Yeah, we do about, there are about 5,000 repairs a year, mostly done by private property owners that are adjacent to the sidewalks.
Okay. All right. And then next, I know that we've talked extensively on TNE and just in, you know, in person and through emails in regards to, you know, long-term parking violations, you know, abandoned cars in my district. I, I seem to think I have a good share of them as, as it relates to citywide. I know that there's going to be a reduction to the non-personnel and equipment funding for the elimination of the extended parking stay enforcement program. How, how that, may that impact our ability to, you know, enforce some of these long-term parking violations?
Yeah, thank you. Another really good time question. The extended stay is the one parking performance area that is the toughest for us, because that is where we find that when we receive a report of a vehicle and then we go out and investigate, usually those vehicles have moved. More than 50% of the time when we go out there. So it's, to us, it's not a very efficient program. So that's why we're trying to, the proposal to council to consider is, yes, you're right, actually move those to another enhanced program that we're going to be trying to address similar vehicles like that. So it's going to be a, we're going to, if approved by council, we would be doing a, a whole team just going on registered vehicles to make sure that there have been registered and are registered with the state DMV. So there is going to be more enhanced focus, just not on the, in the extended stay, but we're going to be going after registered, unregistered vehicles throughout the city with a program to, to try to rectify that problem. That may pick up a lot of those extended stay vehicles because they may not be registered. So that's part of the program proposal.
How would this other new program be different than the effectiveness of the original one?
Because we will be able to use our automated license plate readers to then query the DMV on registered. And it's going to be a team that would actually go around and they would be assigned just to do that, is to go find unregistered vehicles throughout the city.
Wow. Well, I'm excited for that. Obviously, you know that I've been frustrated with abandoned vehicles as well as street sweeping. And I think, you know, resources has always been something that, you know, lack of resources has always been an issue with, you know, I think, full enforcement. And so hopefully, I know this isn't the year to do it, but hopefully, as, as years come, we could look at something that could provide relief to individuals, especially in those areas that are congested, where we know multi, multifamily housing, our individuals, people are living on the couches, people, multiple people, you know, in a, in a home. Those areas are really impacted. So I, I look forward to hopefully a way for us to resolve that in the future.
Yeah. Just to add to that, council member, which is another proposal coming forward is actually some pilot projects on the street sweeping to become more effective there with regard to vehicles parked in some, some areas. We're going to pick a couple of street sweeping zones and actually try to become more proactive when it comes to that.
Thank you.
It does mean a more aggressive parking compliance, but it, the, the whole point is to try to get the streets cleaned better and then vehicles moved. So they're, part of the proposal that we're coming forward with in the NBA is going to be that one as well. So there's a lot of emphasis on maybe more effective and proactive enforcement of the, some of the parking regulations.
And I, and I do want to thank you for taking the time to come to my district with my constituents in the Arbuckle-Pocaway neighborhood. I know that that's a lot for a director to do and that, you know, directors don't have time to be going to every single district to meet with individuals.
That's what directors have to do.
But, but I want to, I want to thank you. And, you know, even though I'm frustrated, I appreciate you leaning in and us working together.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, council member. Appreciate you highlighting the disproportionate impact of our challenges enforcing our current parking, parking rules. Okay, let's go back to Councilmember Duwan.
Thank you, mayor. Just a quick question. The railroad crossing on 101 right by Mulberry is constantly having graffiti. Do we have any connection with the railroads and nor is them to take care of it?
Are you, you're referring to the one that's near the 880 101 interchange?
Yes.
And it, it's right near Old Oakland Road, that one? So there's, there's two railroad crossings. One, and just to highlight what's going on, the one that you're referring to, it is owned by the Union Pacific, but the maintenance agreement between Caltrans and the Union Pacific is Caltrans has the responsibility for the outside of that structure, meaning the graffiti that's on it. And I think that's where some of the mayor's comments about some frustration of them being able to actually do something with that. It, we don't have much to do with that. I know the mayor's been pressuring District Four. Caltrans has actually fixed that for a long time. The other railroad bridge that's further south on 101 is actually owned by VTA and part of their purchase for the BART project. They actually maintained that entire bridge. And you can see a higher level of maintenance in terms of graffiti removal by VTA. So I think it's still a frustration, perhaps that's, that's something that, you know, when the mayor and our coordinating offices like beautify, maybe, maybe there's some relief that can be come to that, but I know it's pretty frustrating.
Yes, thank you. And I know the mayor and I believe Senator Cortez is working on Caltrans to give funding to San Jose to maintain not only that, but also specifically to Storya and Tollia exit, to beautify the area. So that way, we don't have this massive unshelter and blight. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thanks for your advocacy, council member. Appreciate it. And I, I think the point about reporting continues to be important. Caltrans is accountable to the state for their SLAs, meaning responding to at least 60, I believe it's 60% or 80% of reports within 60 days, I believe is the, the metric. So being on top of reporting means faster service because ultimately, they do need to hit their, their targets. So, but yes, also a lot of advocacy we can do. Appreciate Senator Cortez's partnership on that. Just before we, bless you, just before we move on, I've had just a couple of quick questions. If we can go back to the dashboard briefly on our transportation and aviation services performance measures. Wanted to ask a couple of questions just to get your interpretation, John and Mookie, of some of the trends we're seeing. So under resident rating of traffic conditions, we were apparently expecting, if you look, if you go from FY 2324 to 2425 target, we were expecting big movement in how residents rated our traffic conditions, specifically their safety for driving, cycling, and walking. We expected a lot of movement. We didn't see as much as we expected. We did see a bit on bicycling, I think, which is good. But I'm curious for driving and walking, why we expected so much progress and why we think we, we stayed flat?
Well, that's a good question. You know, these are, the, following COVID, you know, the, the, the ratings have been all over the place. So I'm not sure I can read too much into the trend because it was so different during COVID.
So we were throwing darts?
Yeah.
Is that what you're telling me?
Well, not, not that. But I mean, we, with the investments that we do do in, in the non-motorized vehicle, the pavement, excuse me, the bicycle and pedestrian improvements, we were certainly hoping for more there. But I, I don't know if I could tell you exactly where these trends are going, because you can see they're up and down, even within subsequent years, that some are up, some are down. I think overall, I think we're seeing some improvements when it comes to bicycling in terms of that, because we have a pretty aggressive bike route and bike path and bike infrastructure improvements within the city. So that, I think, is okay. We don't have a great plan for pedestrian sidewalk improvements. That's something that we'd love to be able to do, but it's really a resource issue. The result of traffic is, you know, relatively good economy following COVID and lots of now more congestion in terms of traffic conditions out there.
Yeah.
And that's just not, that's not the city. That's all over the place. So.
Okay. And just to share, I'm thinking about this. I mean, as we talk about metrics, performance measures, and accountability, and our focus areas, when we set metrics, to me, there, there are basically two kinds of metrics. There are metrics that I would call indicators or health metrics, where we just kind of want to know. It's just useful data. We want to know if something's changing, but we don't think we're doing anything that will change. And then there's what I would consider to be performance measures, separate from indicators or health metrics, where we just kind of want to know what's happening, to, we're setting a target because we believe we are doing something that will yield an impact. And I think if we're going to call something a performance measure, I'm just making this as a general point, because we're going to continue to talk about our dashboards and OKRs and all the rest. I think we should be really explicit upfront when we set the goal, and this is for, for staff in the departments, for, most of all, although I think it's useful for us to know the logic, the thinking, the, the theory of change. What goal are we setting? What are we doing in the next 12 months that we think will produce the impact that we're expecting? And the whole point of that is really to learn. That's the entire idea, is we have a hypothesis, we set a target for improvement, we do the things we hypothesized, we as council sign off on the investments, we say we're putting staff and money into this, and now let's go do the stuff we said we were going to do. Let's make sure we actually did it. And then let's measure and see if we got the outcome. And if we did, great, we learned that that works. Let's do more of that thing. And if we do the thing and nothing changes, we may have learned, well, that didn't have much of an impact. Maybe that's not so useful, or maybe there was something else we need to change about it. So it's all about that learning cycle. That's kind of philosophically what I hope is more of our conversation. I do have a couple of other questions on performance measures here, though I can see our assistant city manager desperately wants to chime in on the philosophy of, of metric setting and reporting. So I'll let him do that and then we'll keep going.
I'm, I'm actually desperately hoping Jim Shannon jumps in.
All right.
And, and talks about our approach.
The money guy.
Because I, I will say, I think it's, it's something, you know, at a senior staff level, especially in the city manager's office with the directors, that we're, we're really thinking through how we approach this work. And so just for a little bit more specificity, I'd like Jim to kind of go over some of that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you, Lee, and good morning, everybody. Jim Shannon, City's Budget Director. Mayor, we had, especially when we're looking at the, the dashboards as part of this year's budget process, taking a little bit closer look at what the performance targets are for the things that we, our work should be affecting, and making sure that those targets are still pushing us, but are something that is, could, could, should be achievable within the resources that we have available as part of the budget. I think, you know, some of these measures over the past, although I think we've been getting better over the last couple of years, but especially this coming year, they have been, you know, here's maybe where we want to be, a little bit more than what it actually could be with the resources that, that we have. So we're really taking that more focused approach. And so I think even in the one you cited, I think the targets for 2526, you'll see those in that one are a little bit lower, still above sort of where they currently are.
Yeah.
But, but that's sort of a good example of how we've kind of reframed the approach a little bit for this year's budget process.
Yeah, understood. Great. And would you, would you agree, is it sort of the sentiment of the administration as well, that there's a difference between a metric we want to monitor to just understand what's happening or changing, which may be due to external factors, and we just want to know what's happening versus a performance measure where we're saying, we're setting a target because we're going to do something that we think will actually help us hit a target?
Yeah.
Is that, and are we being clear about the difference when we talk about it internally?
Well, I think, and I, I would turn it back over to Lee in a second. I mean, one, so that's why we also have the community indicators dashboard. So those are sort of the indicators, like here's sort of what's going on. We don't necessarily have direct control over them, but these are the things we want to know what the conditions are, even though we don't specifically affect it. For, we don't, we are going to come forward with the community indicators for TAS and EUS as part of an MBA that's coming up later. But, but that's an example of that difference. But, but Lee?
Yeah, I wanted to say, that's a great question. And I think we're thinking about it very differently. And I think it kind of depends on which CSA and which department. So some of those outcomes or intended outcomes, community indicators, those are really good for, for us as an organization. And I say organization, staff and council, to be able to understand, okay, we really need to look at these things. And they go into not only operational decisions that we may make, you know, on any given day or programmatic decisions, but also how we bring those indicators into this room around different policy discussions, resource discussions that we may need to have with you. You know, separate, those, some of those key results or indicators are really performance things that you are asking us to do. And what you won't see in the dashboard specifically, and, and we can do a better job of this in, in some of the items that we'll be talking about, and you'll actually see it in the manager's budget addendum that we release from the Office of Economic Development, is taking that performance objective that you're asking and actually not just putting it in the dashboard, but embedding it within a program or a department at the lowest level possible. So there's much more attention and rigor around that actual performance. So that's something that we often don't talk about, but a lot of those things that you're just going to see in that base dashboard are showing up in other performance measures or activity workload and highlights in the budget at a much lower level to make sure there's, make sure there's time and attention around them.
That sounds great. And, and like, there, there are a lot of things we want to monitor and measure and report on and know its status, the status of it. I would just encourage us to really think hard when we set a target and ask, always ask the question, what are we doing new, different? What's changing? What, what is our hypothesis for change? I think, and I can say this, having now been on this council for four and a half years, it is, I know, immensely frustrating to all of us, not just electives, but city staff, to see a chart over multiple years where the performance is flat here and 20 points higher is the target, and neither have changed for years. Let's not, I, I know we're moving away from that. I just want to be really clear so we're on the same page. That doesn't help anybody. We should always set targets when we actually think we're going to do something that's going to move us in a better direction and then be explicit about hypotheses. So, John, next question, and I'll wrap up in a second here. PCI, so pavement condition index. Now, this is one where I had a different hypothesis than you did. I thought in a world in which we're spending our Measure T dollars and paving roughly 25 miles of local roads per year, per district, over 200 miles citywide, that we'd continue to see incremental progress. I would have expected it to go from 74 to 75. So tell me why, next year, despite your team doing amazing work with our contractors to pave over 200 miles of local roads, we will not see an improvement in our PCI?
Just being conservative, mayor, we, we
You're sandbagging.
We, we have been tracking this every year. And we actually have, we do assessments of a percentage of the roadway every year and using a vendor that is very good and, and helps us with that. With, we, like I mentioned earlier in one of the questions, we do have another two years of very robust pavement improvements.
Okay.
Fixing a lot of the roadways that have not seen a paver machine and Fixing a lot of the roadways that have not seen a paver machine in 20-plus years, so.
No, it's beautiful. You're doing a great job. I got to sit on one of those pavers. But why isn't, why isn't the outcome changing? We're spending a lot of money, you guys are doing great work.
We'll, we'll see.
Take the victory lap, John. You don't think we're going to get to 75?
I'd rather make sure that we do it, achieve that by at least one, but we're going to stick with this right now.
You're being conservative. Fine. That's your call, not mine. All right, next year, I'm going to ask again, I hope it's 70, we're going for 75. Okay. Let me ask you about bike network completion and the hypothesis here. Okay, we've been flat two years in a row, 14%, 14%. Next year, we're expecting proportionally a big jump, we're going to 16%. That's over a 15% improvement. Why? What are we doing? So, we are going to be adding 15% of our planned bike network next year, roughly? That 14% to 16% jump?
Yeah, we've been able, well,
What's happening in the next 12 months?
These two are, just going back to your previous question about metrics, these are the two that we actually have some control over.
Oh, yeah.
Both the pavement and condition index and this. And that's what we're forecasting, if we're able to actually do all the work, some of this is grant-funded, we're, if you recall, over the last couple of years, we've been very successful getting very large grants for major reconstructions and reconfigurations of some of our roadways. We were able, we are able to do that, and we're actually awarding contracts that we were able to get through before there was a freeze. I'm a little concerned that there will be some of that impact on this forecast, but right now, with our pavement program and the grants that we do receive that are not frozen, we think we'll be able to add to the bike network like that. So, that's in plans that we do have for something that we control. We do much of this work through our pavement program by reconfiguring some of the roadways.
Okay. Got it. All right. Jim Shannon, you're signing off on these. So, we're paving over 200 miles of roads next year with local money and state money, but we're not going to see a PCI improvement, but we are definitely, we're going to see a market increase in the bike network completion in the next 12 months. That's what, that's how I read the targets. So, I just, you guys, as long as nobody gets heartburn over that, that's great. You have until June to update the metrics. All right. Finally, Mookie, you're getting off easy here. I am curious about passenger perception of airport cleanliness. Good progress from 68% to 75%. That's great. Real movement. Awesome. Next year, we think it's going to keep going up. What are you, what are you doing to improve the perception of cleanliness at the airport? Just out of curiosity?
Well, the, the survey results, obviously, we, we measure the passengers with some impact surveys throughout the year, so at different points in time, we're measuring this, this, the scorecard. We have a contracted service that keeps the general facilities clean. However, we've done a lot, or we are still in a, in a progress state with some of our tenants that are rebuilding some of our food and beverage. Some of those are long in the tooth, they've been under construction for a longer period of time than necessary. So, with mall walls being up, there's a perception that there's extra dust or extra, just a feeling of not seeing completion in new stores. Now, we came to council a couple of months ago for the retail program. Those mall walls will be going up also in construction happening, so we're, I think, I think the perception of cleanliness also goes along with space and how people feel comfortable in the space and how clean it is. So, we're continuing to work on these. I think the measures are in good shape at this point, but we can always do better.
Okay, great. And just to confirm, last question for you, Mookie, these, these three airport measures that you have prioritized here and highlighted for us in the dashboard, these are the three best proxies the council should be looking at for how we're doing over at the airport?
Yes, these are, these are performance measures overall. I think they're the best ones. Now, when you get into our performance summary into the deeper levels, like on page 360 of our, our department budget summaries, to your previous question about corrective work orders being completed, how much staff are we assigning to prevent and maintenance work hours, those are the details, as the Assistant City Manager mentioned, down to the lowest metric level possible. We're researching those, and we're tracking those, and we are presenting those in our budget, too.
Yeah, that's fine. Just want to make sure we're highlighting the right ones.
Yes, sir.
And you feel these are the best three. Okay. Well, listen, everybody, I'm sorry to be so annoying about the metrics. I just think it's kind of at the governance level here, the place we should be focused is, what are we saying we're going to do? What impact do we think we're going to have? What are we learning if we do or don't hit the impact? That's kind of where I hope we as a body will spend more time. Mookie, John, you both, you and your teams are doing great work. We really appreciate it. Thank you for the update. John didn't know I was going to put him on the spot on the metrics, I apologize for that. You were, you were a good sport. Thank you. So, we are going to conclude the budget study session on transportation and aviation services, and move on to the environmental and utility services, and we'll take a minute for everybody to transition. All right. So, I believe we are back here. Poor John is still on the hot seat, and we are bringing in Jeff and Lori. Thank you, thank you guys for being here. And Lori, are you kicking off, or Jeff?
I'm going to do it.
Jeff is wonderful. Okay, let's jump in.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jeff Provenzano, almost said Deputy Director, Director of Environmental Services Department. And with me today is John Risto, Director of Transportation, and Lori Mitchell, Director of Energy. This CSA is committed to providing dependable, affordable, and resilient utility services to San Jose residents, as well as protecting our natural environment. The slide features the core services of our CSA. You're familiar with most of them, potable water delivery, recycled water, garbage and recycling, stormwater, sanitary sewer and storm maintenance of our critical infrastructure, and of course, providing clean energy to the community. At a program level, changes of note include the addition of our Regulatory Compliance Group, as well as a small team dedicated on developing purified water. Considering that many of the Climate Smart's efforts have been focused on electrification upgrades and to alleviate pressure on the general fund, this team will be moving to the Energy Department starting in July. This move preserves this important program while saving the general fund approximately You can see here are dashboards, which I'm sure we'll have more discussion on. For the departments working with the city manager's office, we've, over the past six months, have been upgrading our performance measures. These dashboards, though, have not changed. They're demonstrating the CSA's continued proficiency at treating wastewater, delivering recycled water, supplying clean power, diverting waste from landfills, and keeping our sanitary sewer overflows at a minimum. You'll see from this graph that there has been a slight change in our budget across the CSA, with the name, the main difference being the Energy Department, which will realize lower power purchasing costs. Overall, our position count has remained approximately the same, going up by one exactly. The CSA will continue to lead San Jose toward a carbon-neutral future. We will also continue delivering high-quality utility services at competitive rates, including a comprehensive slate of waste management services, you can see there. Additionally, we will continue to deliver sustainable services, offering customers power mix options at 10% or more renewables and PG&E with 100%, up to 100% renewable. We will also be continuing to focus on strategic investments while complying with an ever-increasing workload of regulatory requirements. Overall, the outcome will be protecting the public, providing reliable and consistent utility services, and protecting public and environment health. Most of the ads in the CSA are for non-personal items. There are a few strategic investments included in here, and a few for personal, such as with our recycling ambassadors and energy regulatory compliance and risk management. Most significantly, ESD will realize costs related to the transition to mechanical de-watering of biosolids. You can see that as the top item there, is our main cost driver in the, in the utility. This facility is now scheduled to be commissioned this fall, and the department will simultaneously clear out the solar drying beds as those, over the next, beginning in about four years. Additionally, chem, which will help reduce costs by, by, right now, we're going to be, over the next four years, we'll be managing two biosolids management systems at the regional wastewater facility, and as those biosolids lagoons, as they're phased out, we'll be able to see cost savings there. Additionally, chemicals continue to rise. You can see there as one of our main cost drivers again this year. A huge success for us in ESD was our recycling ambassadors dedicated to conducting the lid flip visual inspections of recycling contamination, and performing field outreach, including what we call our oops and our good job tags on recycling cans, and talking to residents. This effort has, with residents' efforts, have decreased recycling contamination from 50% contaminated down to 41%. What this means in dollar terms is we will be saving about $6 million annually that we would have paid to our waste haulers, so we'll be saving money, and that helps to offset contractual costs on our garbage and recycling side. Additionally, DOT and ESD will continue to work together to comply with stormwater permit provisions, particularly C2, that's noted here in this table, and that is marking of storm drain inlets to let residents and businesses know to not put, to be aware and to protect our storm drains to prevent contaminants from getting into our creeks and to the bay. We'll also be working together on, on green stormwater infrastructure and maintaining these critical assets. Looking ahead, the CSA is focused on delivering exceptional and cost-effective utilities and making very strategic investments when needed. We will continue to provide services in a way that is sustainable and in compliance with permits, including working within the CSA and outside of it to implement requirements under the numerous permits that we have, such as our stormwater discharge permit and our nutrient permit, which is a major potential cost driver for us in how we discharge water to the bay. We also continue to play a leading role in regulatory affairs, including monitoring potential impacts to the city and mitigating impacts to utility ratepayers as feasible. And with that, we're available for questions.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Let me just quickly ask a couple of metrics questions, and I'll pass it off to colleagues. San Jose Clean Energy, are we coming back to do more of a presentation? Was that the entire presentation? That was it? Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. On the Clean Energy Power Mix, this is another case where we had a target that was showing an upward trend to a very ambitious goal for 2425, it seems to me. And then, we actually saw a decline, seems percentage-wise at least, fairly significant from the year prior. And I'm just curious if Lori could give us a little more interpretation of what we're seeing there and why? And then, we do expect a pretty big jump roughly back, not quite back, to where we were last fiscal year. So, what's, what are we seeing in the data?
Yeah, it's a great question, Mayor. So, there was a regulatory change that year related to how Diablo Canyon is allocated to us, so that's the nuclear power plant. So, at the, prior to that year, due to our customers paying the PCIA, we got an allocation essentially for free because our customers were paying for it through the PCIA. Then, the state, you know, added some funding to it into the legislature, and so now, that project is paid for by all ratepayers, so we're not getting the same allocation. So, that meant that our carbon-free resources were lower in that year. In subsequent years, we have gone out and purchased to replace some of that, as well as many of our long-term renewable projects have come back online, so you see that renewable content increasing.
Got it. Okay. And that's due to new power purchase agreements, you're saying, for next year, the increase we're seeing?
Correct. As you know, council has approved many renewable projects over the years, and they're starting to come online and generate electricity, so that's what we expect to happen next year.
Okay. Okay. Got it. And then, let's see here, Jeff, maybe a couple of questions for you. On operational utility assets, hard to tell with the bars here, but seems like the estimate for 2425 is shockingly good for the online and functional, I'm looking at that blue bar, higher than expected and close to 100%, which is great. We need our wastewater treatment facility to be as close to 100% online and functional as possible. I'm curious, though, why, if we did, if we were able to achieve that, why we're once again projecting that lower rate? Is that just based on like a historical average, or do we have something expected, like some work that's being done next year?
Great question, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, what we're, for our target for next year, what we're trying to factor in there is all the work that we are doing out at the facility to rebuild it. So, we do have a lot of deteriorating infrastructure that we're, that's offline as we go through these kind of longer-term capital projects, and so we're trying to adjust that to kind of show that it's there, there's a little bit of a gap to 100%, and we're working on it.
Okay. And then, similarly, for the storm sewer infrastructure, you achieved nearly 100% online and functional, which is great. How, what does it even mean for the storm sewer? I mean, can you even take that offline? What does that mean, and why would it be less than 100%?
Maybe I could take that one.
Sure.
John Risto, Director of Transportation. This is, again, we try to achieve 100% that all of those, either storm or sanitary sewer lines are going to be working.
Yeah.
The target, when we set it for the next year, is we anticipate that there's always problems, that we will have to be taking portions or pieces of that system offline and then reroute it. So, it, it's just anticipation of conservative looking at it, so.
Okay.
Like, this year, we're doing fine. You just don't know if there's going to be something that's going to have to be taken offline.
Okay. I guess my, my understanding was those sewer, storm sewer at least, is, is right out into the waterways and out to the bay. Is that wrong?
Yes. Storm is, yeah, just
Okay. So, that can't really be offline, but you're measuring the work, the maintenance work.
Yeah, there's always work that either public works, or, you know, with a replacement of those lines are going to have to be done. Every year, we do that, both the sanitary and storm sewers. And then, in some cases, we've got a plug problem that we're having to take a sanitary sewer offline because there's a, there's a problem with it.
Got it. Okay, thanks. And then, my final question on metrics, landfill waste diversion, obviously a priority for all of us, environmentally the right thing to do. There's also state law that is mandating that we do a better job of diverting waste from our landfill, economically better for us as well in the long run. So, curious, we had a growth target here for 2425. I'm looking especially at the orange bar, which is residential. That's 55% of our waste stream as a city. We expected, I believe, a higher percentage. It kind of came down. I'm just curious, but now, we're expecting it to go up a little bit. What are we learning? What are we seeing as we try to help our residential customers? We want to move those bars up as close to 100% as we can. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, what's the interpretation of the graph?
I'm going to invite down Valerie Osmond, Deputy Director
Oh, I know Valerie.
of Wasted Management.
All right. Hi, Valerie. We've done some PSAs together on this very topic.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Valerie Osmond, Deputy Director, Environmental Services. So, for those graphs, we have projected higher targets in the past, and we've sort of made those more achievable, I think, in this, this next out year, based on the trends for, that we're tracking for this year's diversion targets.
Okay.
So, diversion is keeping things out of the landfill, so that's recyclables, compostables, anything that does not belong in the landfill and that can be otherwise be reused.
Okay. And are we doing anything new or different this year that might help us incrementally move that number up? Are there any key insights from the last couple of years of experience that the council should be aware of?
Yes. On the commercial side, you'll notice that those numbers are a little bit lower than, compared to some of our other programs, and both the Republic Services Materials Recovery Facility and the Zero Waste Energy Development Facility, where they do Development Facility, where they do anaerobic digestion of our organic waste from our commercial businesses, they're both doing facility and process improvements that will continue to get that number to come up a little bit. We've seen some improvement over the last couple of years. On our residential side, it's kind of twofold. It's one thing is the waste that our residents are putting in their garbage and recycling cans and encouraging them to recycle right. And then also on the processing end, so at our material recovery facilities where we're sorting through garbage and pulling out all the compostables and sending those for composting, and also pulling out the recyclables, we do residue studies where we take a look at the material that is left over after it has been processed to make sure that there is not an excessive amount of recoverable material. So again, those recyclables and organics.
Okay. That's good to know. So on the green bar, commercial, which is our lower performer there, we do-- you are taking some specific actions. You think it's going to start moving that number up?
Yes.
Sounds like, okay, great. Thanks. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you all. Let me turn now to Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff, Bage, and John for the report. I just got a couple of questions. In order to help our residents to be more coherent in recycling and saving our environment, why don't we-- I see that we have smaller garbage can, and then we have a larger garbage can. So when there's a smaller garbage can, people will dump everything that they can't fit in the small can over to the recycling. And I don't think we have enough resource to monitor those all the time. So why don't we make those cans all evenly throughout the city, so encourage people to put garbage where it should be and recycle where it should?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Dwan. Yes, you're correct. Most of our single-family homes have the smaller size 32-gallon garbage cart. It is the least expensive, and I think that is a main driver as to why 85% of our single-family homes have the smaller size. We would hope that if additional garbage capacity was needed, that they would upsize to a 64- or a 96-gallon cart. It can be somewhat cost prohibitive for some of our residents. So we also encourage residents to use our extra garbage stickers. Those can be much more affordable. You can buy extra garbage stickers here at City Hall, Lucky and Safeway stores, and our public libraries, and they can put out as many extra bags of garbage as they need. So we are looking at our single-family rate structure to figure out a way to make a larger garbage cart more affordable. Additionally, we did a study in 20-- I think we started in 2022 and are wrapping up the larger garbage cart study, where we distributed larger garbage carts to approximately 9,000 single-family homes across all council districts at no additional cost. So the study was intended to look at if a household had additional garbage capacity, would it make their recycling cleaner? And while we had our own hypothesis, the study was largely inconclusive. We started with about 4,000 homes. We added an additional 4,000, 5,000 homes, and we didn't see the big shift in recycling contamination reduction that we were expecting. So it's not necessarily the whole solution. We did find slightly better results with reducing recycling contamination through that cart tagging program that Jeff had mentioned.
I was just thinking, if we take the cost of the contamination that costs the city, and then you weight that to the cost of providing a larger garbage can, I think somewhere there's a balance, or at least there's an offset where it can help our residents to put garbage where it should be.
Yes, that's correct. And it is-- there is a balance in there, and it is a multifaceted and complex formula because when the garbage quantity goes up, we pay more for processing. So that processing to pull out any recyclables that work their way into the garbage stream and the organics that I mentioned that we recover and compost for all of our residents.
And can we tap into the cost of consumer paying for recycling, right? The five cents per bottle, plastic bottle and so on? I think there's like $700 million available for recycling. Is that something that we can tap into?
CalRecycle does have a bottle bill fund, and we do receive some of that, a portion of that funding that we apply towards outreach and various other programs.
Well, thank you. And then this last question, I believe, is for Jeff. At our regional wastewater facility, people don't realize that anything that goes into the toilet, including toilet paper, become a waste, a solid waste. And when you collect with all the wipes and everything, it's huge amount of solid waste. My thought is, why aren't we use that as an energy source to produce more energy as we burn it and recycling it and so on?
Sure, I was going to jump in, but Mariana Chavez, General Manager of the Regional Wastewater Facility.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mariana Chavez, Regional Manager for-- General Manager for the Regional Wastewater Facility. We already do that, Councilmember Dwan. So everything that goes into the toilet, as you say, will end up at the RWF. There are campaigns, the three things that can go into the toilet, it's like the three P's: P, poo, and paper, that comes to us. Anything else that comes, we have a really advanced system that basically takes everything out. So any wipes, floss, anything else gets taken out and goes to the landfill. Paper and all the other organics that go in, they get removed as part of our treatment. All that is actually digested and used in our cogeneration facility. So we are already using all energy that can come to the plant is already used. 80% of the energy that they use at the RWF is actually coming from renewable sources.
I was just thinking, that's a lot of millions of pounds to go into the landfill where we can convert it to energy. And that's just thinking out of the box, and is there somewhere in the future that we could think of possibly?
Yes. So we actually have a couple of projects coming on, kind of down the line. We already are getting all the septic coming, and that's going into our digestors eventually. As part of our-- one of our capital projects that we have, we're going to start receiving fat, oils, and grease into the facility, so that will also go into our energy portfolio. And there is even the possibility, we want to do so in the future, to receive a stuff for co-digestion. So if we have food waste that we would like to use, we could include that as well. So all that is in the planning, and we-- the fog for sure we're doing, we're evaluating other options.
I was just also think of all the wipes is, you know, it's cotton material, it can be burned easily, and it doesn't contaminate the earth as much as, you know, the petroleum bays, if you will.
Yeah. And burning can be a solution, however, one thing to keep in mind, we have very, very restrictive legislation around air emissions. So the Air Board has-- I mean, there is just limitations on what can be implemented in terms of burning.
Right. And then I know that many places uses kind of like a catalytic converter in the sense of burn off all the excess unburned carbons, if you will. Anyway, well, thank you for your answer and continue the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salas.
Hey, Jeff, here's an easy one for you. On those dashboards, recycled water has been going up. You're at 12 million gallons per day now. Is that all the recycled water we have, or have you had more users on the other end? You could deliver more.
We-- there is potential to deliver more, and we're constantly adding new customers as they are becoming more efficient. Many of the newer customers coming down the line right now are data centers. And there's a lot of discussion right now on how much water they need and providing reliable water supply to data centers. There is the ability to about double where we are right now. We're working on that with some of our other regional stakeholders.
Thank you. And then Lori, on the page 268, under Energy Department Core Services, you say "energy community programming, energy customer support, and providing clean energy to the community." I wish you could change that to "providing clean energy to the community at the lowest possible rates." I don't think you guys give yourself enough credit that you really are delivering clean energy, but cheap. In fact, I would almost encourage you to change San Jose Clean Energy to San Jose Cheap Energy. Because, again, the image we have is clean, certainly, but again, some of the things you're doing for the lower-income folks in our area, I don't think anybody even thinks about or knows about. And I would encourage you to even call it San Jose Cheap Energy.
Thank you, Councilmember. Certainly trying to do a lot of great work to address affordability and provide, you know, both cleaner and cheaper energy to our community. So thank you. We'll certainly consider it.
Anything else, Councilmember? Okay. Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Jeff, Lori, John, for your presentation. Really appreciate the work and thought that's gone into this. So another easy question, just kidding. Can staff provide a breakdown of the 7.0 FTE reductions under the staffing consolidation? And specifically, which roles or services would be eliminated, and can we expect impact to our service level?
Let me flip to the right page here, but in general, we, across the department, primarily in Environmental Services Department, what we have looked at in our goal to keep rates affordable, we're always looking for efficiencies throughout the programs. And so instead of just doing an add every year, we're also looking for a cut. Some of the areas that we have reduced here are some like analyst position, vacant positions, no filled spots. But it's deleting spots and then adding new ones, and I can kind of flip here. I think just as Jeff is finding there, so it's on-- they're detailed out on page 479 of the ESD budget there, where it kind of talks about the different classifications that includes chemist, analyst, public information rep, a couple vacant associate engineering techs. Thank you. Yeah. These are-- so just going through the line here, office specialists, these are just support staff for some of the divisions. We're able to incorporate many of those tasks with other program staff. And really, we're just looking for cost savings here. There's an associate engineering technician in there, or two, I see. That is on the regional wastewater facility side. And as we-- as that program ramps up, and we've got a lot of work done over the past 10 years, we're kind of in a plateau phase right now. Work is still progressing, but we're looking for-- there's efficiencies there in that program, both on staff side and also on the consultant side. And we're-- again, it's all about just trimming down our services the best that we can to keep our costs under control. There is an analyst position that's going to be just reassigned from responsibilities at the regional wastewater facility and moving into a different group. And so it's, again, it's just a realignment of support services that we're doing.
Okay. And just to confirm, from what I hear, majority of these FTE positions are unfilled, and for those that are filled, they're kind of being realigned to other teams to build capacity?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. And we shouldn't expect-- due to them not being filled anyway, we shouldn't expect any sort of impacts to service.
No, no impact.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And thank you to our team in all of the services that presented today. I'm grateful for the staff's work on climate resilience, environmental sustainability, and critical infrastructure maintenance. I do have just a couple of questions about the stormwater permit compliance efforts. Given that there was a Supreme Court decision not too long ago, could the staff please provide an update regarding the city's stormwater permit implementation plan, which includes how this Supreme Court decision impacts that plan?
Great question. Thank you. We've looked at that closely with our attorney's office, that that Supreme Court decision doesn't necessarily impact our stormwater permit. We fall under a state regulation on it, and this is a state permit. So we-- there is-- so we're still moving forward with implementation of that permit to the fullest extent that we can. It's unrelated to that more recent Supreme Court decision.
Okay. And I understand that in addition to our need to comply with the stormwater permit, we do have other compliance efforts as a city, one of those being 100% trash load reduction requirement. So could staff please provide the expenditure plan for each activity, including the 100% trash load reduction requirement?
Yeah, I can give just a brief overview of our stormwater permit, but it's quite extensive. There's 22 different provisions and maybe 100 different action items spread throughout there. We're making progress on all of them, specifically with trash load reduction. We have until about December 2025 to reach 100% trash load reduction. Right now, we're partnering very closely with our Department of Public Works, who are installing a range of trash capture devices, which is a key component of reaching that target. Those are some bigger, bigger, below-ground, 30-feet-deep trash collection devices. And on the smaller ones, these smaller ones which are being put in now are going into our storm drains, our gutters. They're being inserted down, and these will collect trash at a street level. The way we kind of pick these sites is we look-- there's an assessment of overland trash, how much trash is just on the street in our properties. And so we look at what those trash levels are and then putting these devices in to remove trash and pollutants before it works its way into the storm pipes itself. That project is about complete, the small trash capture devices. We do have a little bit more work to go. Right now, we're looking at, we're right around the 97%. We'll be around 97% of the 100. And so we do have a little bit more work to go in analyzing all of these and any gaps that we have to do over the next six months. And then we have a range of other programs that we're implementing, such as notifying private property owners that have visual trash on a property if they have a storm drain. That helps us reach our targets. And we have something called OVTA's, or like overland trash assessments, like health monitors, that we have around the city that kind of monitor, again, how dirty different segments of the roadway are and neighborhoods are, and they'll begin to start tailoring programs in those areas to reduce trash levels.
Thank you for that answer. Just to add a little more color to that, I'm curious, would you be able to give us a sense of what financial and environmental impacts we might have as a city if we don't reach that 100%? Although I'm glad to hear we're very close to getting there.
That-- it's difficult to answer directly here. There are the potential for citations or violations, or even potential for nonprofits to question how well we're doing in our efforts. But it is very costly. A major component of our stormwater permit, of course, it's managing homeless encampments in the waterways, removing them from the waterways and the trash associated with that. And we're spending a lot of effort, of course, you're aware of this, in cleaning up our waterways, and that's going to be a major component, too. And so the way this would work is we demonstrate the progress, and we align the resources that we can, and we do the best job. If we-- there are goals, but we'll have to work that, work through that with the Waterboard. They do set targets for us, but really, what they really want to see is effort, too. And effort counts. And so we'll definitely use that in our favor.
Thank you again for answering those questions. Really important work that you're all doing, and I appreciate the tremendous progress that's been made. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Kamay.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I guess maybe I wanted to ask Valerie, you know, many of the other surrounding cities are moving to separating your food waste, and I just was wondering, I know that, you know, we haven't really been doing that. Is there an effort like down the line so that we can prepare people? I know that sometimes people say, "Oh, it's so inconvenient, you know, I can just throw it all together." But, you know, quite often I see fruit and other things going in with the green waste, and, you know, it should probably be separated. And so I was just curious, is there any thought of, you know, sort of starting to implement that or even do-- of, you know, sort of starting to implement that, or even doing a pilot to implement it in a certain area, or?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Kamay. Those are great questions. As part of Senate, State Senate Bill 1383, there's a requirement for all jurisdictions to be able to separate that organic material. And so different jurisdictions are approaching that differently. And in San Jose, many years ago, we ran a pilot and gave some neighborhoods little carts and containers to separate out their organic waste, food waste, food scraps, to see if, how that would work. And unfortunately, the participation rate was very low. So instead, we started phasing in what we call backend processing, which is sending all of our garbage, everything that goes in the black cart, goes to a material recovery facility, and it's sorted. And any food scraps, organics, that means also like soiled napkins, paper towels, pizza boxes, those sorts of things get pulled out and they get sent for composting. We do that across our single-family and multifamily homes. We've been doing it for many years. So that means that in San Jose, 100% of our organics, I should say, 100% of our residents are participating with, you know, very minimal effort on their part. You put all of that organic waste in your black garbage cart. You mentioned the, the green waste. Some people have optional carts, but we also have the loose in the street piles. And we ask people to keep that material out of the green waste piles. It tends to kind of attract rodents and things. And it is a different type of, yard waste is a different type of material. And it is also sent for composting, and it's, produces a different type of, of compost.
Thank you. Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very concerned about everything that has plastics in it. And, you know, Councilmember Dwan mentioned the, the wipes. Wipes are not recyclable. Wipes have synthetics, and some have plastics, and, you know, some that even say that they're flushable are not flushable. There was a lawsuit, lawsuit against Costco that claimed that they were flushable, and they were not, and they get stuck in the pipes and all kinds of things. So I think that as we move forward, the next thing that I think we need to think about is about the plastics. You know, we pay the five cents or whatever it is, but I think that it's something that eventually we, we need to think about how we address everything that has plastics. So, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. All good questions. I don't see any other colleagues with their hand raised, so thus concludes the next CSA, Environmental and Utility Services. Thank you for being here and for your presentation. Turning now to members of the public, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak?
We do not.
We do not. Then this meeting stands adjourned early, and we will see you all here Monday at 9:30. Please plan to be here all day. See you then.